My apologies for the technical list there. So, we're trying to keep this to about an hour or so. We are gonna go ahead and present and then we'll take questions at the end. So if you can go ahead and write questions down or remember them or put them in your phone. We just want to get through all the presentation first and then we'll take questions for the end. So first, I want to say thank you for joining us. We have a series of these planned, really trying to continue to educate folks about our district. It's an ongoing effort. I'll be honest, tonight is really a good crowd. We had approximately 35 sign up. So we're happy to be able to spread the message to you. We also ask you, and we'll remind you at the end, to help us publicize. Clearly, you found out about this through something that you saw, whether it was social media or website, maybe the observer. We also ask you to help. Anybody who can really help spread the word that we are trying to educate people as best we can about our district, we appreciate that consideration. You go ahead and share my screen.
And your family. I hope the rest of your life runs well for you. I know this is sudden and a surprise, but it is, in my opinion...
And we're gonna go from...
I mean, we've been in this three-year relationship.
I would also ask if folks can mute. We're picking up somebody's TV, I believe. Okay. So, we build this as really, you know, the truth about our finances. And we really want to try to give you facts, you know, not spin, not, you know, our version of things. These are facts. These are things that you could pull up through state websites if you wanted. You could pull them up from public records requests. But, you know, again, these aren't meant to be rhetorical speeches. They're meant to be very clear facts that really are sort of the basis of what we have as our financial picture. So first, we're gonna remind folks that our district goals are increasing student achievement, improving transparency throughout our communities, and practicing fiscal responsibility. So, we have held town halls really throughout our time together. We began three years ago, actually coming up on three years ago in the summer of 2018, so that we could get a opportunity to get to meet people and hear their stories and share ours. And we'll continue to do that. We have obviously moved to Zoom, which is a change, but actually one that I think folks welcome because they can join us right from our, right from your living room or your dining room, wherever you happen to be tonight. We also improving transparency throughout our communities. That's always a part of what we're trying to accomplish. That's a piece of this evening. But tonight's about fiscal responsibility and how we are able to practice fiscal responsibility and how we have implemented many measures to make sure that we are as accountable as possible with your tax dollars and moving forward it will continue to be. So, it's important to share a little bit about where we were because we always hear... Just go ahead. Sorry, we're just trying to move this so we can see the entire screen. Perfect. Okay. So, we always hear, you know, "We can't manage taxpayer dollars." That's definitely a mantra that's out there. And we have to really, you know, explain that and realize that's a piece of our history. And yet, we also have to emphasize that term. It's our history. It's not us right now. So, we have to acknowledge that in 2003 through 2005, we faced a scandal really in terms of conspiracy and bribery. Now, in terms of who was around then, and that's an important consideration, you've got a board, a superintendent, and a treasurer. The superintendent and the treasurer make recommendations to the board. That's how a school district works. So there's an awful lot of people out there in our school district. We have approximately 1,600 actually. And they're making decisions every single day that influences, that influence the education of our students. But ultimately, it's the superintendent and treasurer that make recommendations to the board. The board votes on them. Now, they can vote yes, they can vote no. We try to give them recommendations that they can agree to. In 2003 through 2005, there was one board member that was responsible for that conspiracy and bribery. That board member, that's a red X. That board member is gone. Superintendent and the treasurer, again, not pointing fingers at them. That's, you know, to be litigated in a different forum. But the superintendent and treasurer who were there at the time also no longer with the district. In 2016, we faced a lost money situation where really a bookkeeping error amounted to quite a bit of public outcry about a mistake in a five-year forecast, money that had been budgeted but was not actually there. It's important that we emphasize the money was budgeted. It had never been spent. But yes, there was a mistake in our five-year forecast. Five board members at the time, and again, not pointing fingers, folks. We're not trying to find blame with any one person here. Five board members were a part of that Board of Education at that time. None of them are here anymore. That superintendent was not here anymore, is not here anymore, and that treasurer also is not here anymore. So, while yes, we have really some blemishes, some black eyes on our history, we have to look at the truth. And the truth is that those individuals that were responsible for those challenges are no longer associated with our district. And that's really important that we continue to emphasize that. In 2018, there was a mantra that we had found money. That was actually right before I was coming into the district. And the found money was really sort of a common refrain. It's important to emphasize that there wasn't found money. There was a 3% change in a five-year forecast, which is really minimal when you're talking about $150 million forecast or budget. The revenue that we had anticipated and projected from November to May had gone up by 1.6%. And we had spent 1.4% less than we anticipated, 3% change. The reason we were able to balance a budget, and that was really what folks struggled to understand, and quite frankly, we as a school district struggled to explain at the time, was how can you, you know, fail a levy and yet still you're able to balance your budget? We reduced 55 certified staff members to balance our budget. So, the truth of that matter is that found money mantra was that we didn't find money. Our Board of Education had made very difficult decisions to reduce spending and maintain fiscal stability. So, before we look at, you know, the present and understand where we're gonna go in the future, we think it's really important to make sure that we acknowledge our history and we acknowledge the fact that there have been mixed messages. We acknowledge the fact that there were crimes committed here. But we emphasize that, you know, those crimes were 2003 through 2005. That board member is no longer with us. We acknowledge a bookkeeping error in 2016. None of that regime, board members nor superintendent nor treasurer are with us at this point either. It's also important to emphasize the state context. We don't obviously operate in a vacuum. The state of Ohio is the state, all 50 states are responsible for the, for public education in their school districts. In 1994, a family near Toledo brought a suit called "derolf." Derolf was a family that wanted a better education for their child. And what they forced the state to do and really the judge in that county to do was really look at how schools are funded. And the county or the state court at that time determined that state funding model in Ohio is actually unconstitutional. There's an overreliance on property taxes. Those are the taxes that you pay really semi-annually, twice per year. They challenged the state legislature to provide a better and more equitable means of financing education. That was also, that same case was then affirmed later in 2000, 2001, and 2002. They kept bringing this case because the state legislature never did anything about derolf. And the truth is that school funding in Ohio is still unconstitutional in large part because the overreliance on property taxes. The fear, the concern, the constitutional challenge was that we should have more of an equitable playing field across the state of Ohio instead of trying to keep coming back for property tax levies and keep coming to local residents to say that you're responsible for a better deal of funding in your, in your community. Further state context, and again, it's important that we have a full understanding of what type of playing field we're operating on here. State funding, local funding, and federal funding equals our total revenue. So we actually get some money from all three of those entities. State funding is actually larger share than federal funding. State funding is based on enrollment. And, and this is key, it's based on a local capacity to provide. That's your voted millage. So the state of Ohio looks at Parma as a school district and says, "How much money can you provide?" And that is impacted or reflected, I should say, in the formula that they create. Also includes categorical aid for functions such as special education, career technical education, transportation. So we get some money, some weighted funding for each of those categories. We don't just get, you know, the state amount if you're a special education student or a student with disabilities. Same thing with career tech. Those types of models require more from a school district. They cost more. And yes, we get some more from the state of Ohio. The current base formula in the state of Ohio, so if we, if we actually got what the state says is, you know, your base student amount, $6,020. Here's the kicker, and this is what we want to emphasize because I think a lot of people don't recognize this. Parma's state contribution per student is $5,332. So we don't even get in our school district what Parma, or I'm sorry, what the state of Ohio agrees is the normal per people expenditure, which is $6,020. And again, that's because when they look at our millage, what we voted in, they say, "You're capable of providing more than that." So we get below, about $700 below what is actually contributed across the state. Our total state fund, I'm sorry, our total funding then is $14,260 per student. That's what we spend per student in Parma to educate our students. The other piece about state funding that's important, and you'll hear this especially at levy time, not just for me, but for many other superintendent, from any other school district, you know, campaigner. House Bill 920, which was passed in the 70s as really a measure to cap inflation and what type of inflation, what type of effect inflation could have on local taxpayers. House Bill 920 freezes levies at the dollar amount of collection at the time of the passage. So I always use my example of if we passed a levy in 1980 and it was a six mil levy and it collected $100 from you as a taxpayer in a given year, we will never collect more than that $100. Despite the fact that we face inflation too, despite the fact that we face rising costs too, that $100 is frozen in time by House Bill 920. That's why we have to come back for levies. As our expenses increase, our revenue stays flat unless we come to you and ask for further money. That's House Bill 920, which in the 70s was a great deal for homeowners. You had a lot of inflation at that time. They didn't want to keep paying higher and higher and higher and higher property taxes. But it freezes us at that $100 forever. The millage then is adjusted by the county down. So if it was, if it was a six mil levy, created $100 then, potentially it's a five mil levy now, it still gets at that $100 and it just adjusts downward in your millage. $100 is constant though. So the truth and the piece that we really want you to take away from this is the state provides us less money per student, and that's these numbers here. Instead of the 6,020, we get the 5,332, less money per student because when they look at all of our variables, they think that we can raise enough on our own. We've got some great graphs from Mr. Nucio. He's on the call as well. Mr. Nucio is our treasurer. He is a certified public accountant himself, and he also has a great deal of time invested in the career as an auditor before he began his career in education. This is the second school district he's a treasurer in. We think that that CPA piece is really a great benefit to our district. So he's provided some great graphs and we're gonna, we're gonna look through these tonight. Our general fund totals about $150 million. So that's a pretty significant amount. When you look at that $150 million, where does the money come from? 64% right here comes from you folks. Property taxpayers within the state of Ohio, I'm sorry, within the community of Parma, Parma Heights and Seven Hills. Our state foundation money and other state accounts for about 32%. Other local money at 3.7%. For the most part, folks, we're getting our money from you, almost two-thirds. So the truth here is that we rely far more heavily on local revenue than any other source of funding. Our expenditures, what do we spend money on? Well, quite frankly, we're a service-oriented industry, and so we spend money on personnel. You see 54% of our, of our expenditures go to wages, 23% are for benefits. Services, and we'll talk more about Ed Choice as a service that we now pay for and charter schools as well. Services are outside services that we have to contract with to obtain. Materials is really only 2% of our budget. So, it really is, as we are a service and a people-oriented industry, you see that reflected in how we control our expenditures. Average Ohio spending on personnel is 80%. So if you laid out all the school districts and just took that average, they'd be at 88 or 80%. Where it's 77% of our operating expenses go for personnel. I don't share this with pride because I wish it was different. But I do share this because I think it's an important part of helping tell our story from a financial point of view. When you look at salaries, how do we compare with our, with our neighbors? And these are just different west side suburbs that I took. Independence may actually be just a southern suburb, but suburbs that you will be familiar with, we're at the bottom. So when you look at, you know, these different suburbs that, again, you've driven through or shopped in or visited for games, we're at the bottom of that list in terms of base salary. We rank, and this is the truth, we ranked 29th out of 31 Cuyahoga County districts in teacher-based salary. So if the mantra is that, "Well, this teacher's making an awful lot of money," folks, not in the field here, 29th out of 31 Cuyahoga County districts. And we're not, again, proud of that. We wish it was higher. You certainly want to be competitive when you're sitting in a career fair or you post a job. Yes, young folks understand this. Yes, because I was one of them and all of us in education, we knew what teacher-based salaries were when we went to career fairs or looked at jobs. And quite frankly, depending on what your motivations are, you're often gonna be more attracted to somebody who's gonna offer you $44,000 right off the bat than $39,000. We only show teachers in this account because the classified is pretty complicated. To try to look at a classified pay scale, there's so many different ones based on, you know, are you a monitor? Are you a bus driver? Are you, are you a teacher assistant? Are you a special education assistant? So, we only show teachers, but I promise you that the same is true across the board. Our classified folks are also often $3 to $4 underpaid compared just to their neighbors right down the street. And we talked about this when we were going through classified negotiations. If you're a bus driver, you can train in Parma, go down the street, make $3 per hour more. And so, again, we don't show this to boast. We show this as part of our story. We are not exorbitant amount of money in terms of salary. Folks sometimes say, "Well, okay, you're not paying your teachers." But my gosh, there's a ton of administrators up in that central office. There's a ton of principals. Everywhere I look, there's a principal. Well, folks, here's the truth. Since 2018, we have reduced spending on central office personnel by $1.6 million. We did that when we came here, when I started here. We looked at what we thought could be expenditures out of the central office reallocated into schools so that we would have things like more counselors, deans of students who are first-line responders for our students, home liaisons who work with families to forge, you know, connections that might not in other ways come. We transferred that money from the central office into our schools. As a result, when you look at administrative expenditure per people, again, taking our neighbors as sort of our peer group, we're quite a bit lower than many of our school districts that you see here. We're at $1,778 in administrative expenditure per people, higher than just a few here. But again, we are not spending on administration. Special education is definitely a factor in how much money we spend and how we allocate funding. When we have to send someone, a child, when we can't meet their needs and we have to send them out of district, the amount that we spend really multiplies exponentially. And so it just showed you a couple examples here, and there's about eight to 10 different institutions that we partner with when we can't meet student needs. We have seven students, for instance, right now at Educational Alternatives. Right now, the tuition at Educational Alternatives is $52,416, and that's on the lower end. When we send a student to steps and we have seven of them there, that's $115,000 per year. So we do everything we can to keep students in district. And quite frankly, sometimes, you know, we still hear that old, "Just get them out of here, get them out of here, get them out of here." We can't be in that mindset. We have to meet every student's need. First, it's the humane thing to do. So first, from a moral standpoint, it's the right thing to do to educate our children in our district. But secondly, from a financial standpoint, certainly you start to see some of these higher numbers. One of the measures that we've taken is the creation of the ACES Center. And the creation of ACES will help us continue to reduce costs and provide an option in district for families. This is the Wingham Parma Senior High that we have dedicated to a center for students with autism. Our goal is to keep them in our district instead of sending them elsewhere. We also thank you to our Director of Exceptional Children, Robert Hoon, who since his beginning, he's in his second year, has worked tirelessly to reduce outside placement costs, keep students in district. We've reduced outside costs by approximately $1 million just from August of 19 to the present. And again, that's our special education staff and we're grateful for their efforts. School choice is an ever-increasing dollar figure for our school district, and it's important that folks understand that. I'll be perfectly candid, I took a lot of heat last year when I was relatively public about my advocacy against school choice or my opposition to school choice. And I want to be clear, it's not a moral feeling on my part. It's simply about what, what does it do to the finances of our school district? So this is a graph that shows you the different expenses. And here's right now in, well, let's take actual 2020. So here's the year 2020. When you look at school choice, red is open enrollment. We don't have a whole lot of students that choose to go to a different school district. Really, that's only Cleveland for the most part. We do have, Cleveland is an open enrollment school district and they accept really students from anywhere. And some of our students cross the border and go back into Cleveland. It may have been where they originated from, where they started their educational career. Community schools, you can see, are costing us about $12,000, $12.5 million. Those are Constellation for the most part. Constellation is not the only community school, but it certainly is the largest that we compete with. Right here, the Ed Choice Scholarship. And again, those were opened up to Parma Senior High and Valley Ford students last year, right at about $8 million that cost us. And so if you look again down to the truth here, 433 students took Ed Choice scholarships. And here was the frustration. It was based on data in part from 2014. They looked at different, three different measures of our graduation rate, 13, 14, 14, 15, then they froze and went with 17, 18 results. So our frustration was that, you know, you're essentially taking, and again, this is a significant amount of money. This is approximately $8 million. You're taking approximately $8 million out of our budget because of data that really is five years old. In 2021, that will cost the equivalent of 9.62 mils. So a pretty significant amount of money. And again, I referenced this earlier, we categorize that in the services graph that we showed you before. So when you saw about 19% of our expenditures are services, that's primarily through school Permanent improvement is also an expenditure that we have. Importantly, permanent improvement cannot be used for anything that lasts less than five years. We have a $5.1 million annual allocation. That's important if we're able to pass a bond issue, we have to set aside part of that for maintenance of those buildings. So we're well within, we don't have to raise, you know, more money on top of the bond issue for permanent improvement. We have that money here. Just some examples of things we've spent, this is just for this year. Routine maintenance, things like paving, parking lots, sidewalks, et cetera, lighting, et cetera. We've spent about $309,000 this year. We've bought 10 buses this year. Before we started to begin buses, started to begin to buy buses a year and a half ago, some of our buses dated all the way toward 2003, 2004, well past really their life expectancy. We spent approximately $1 million this year on buses. We did put quite a bit of work into the ACES wing of the building that is definitely something that is built to last. It's an investment in our children. And it's an investment, again, in the fiscal stability of our district because, again, every time we can spend, we can save a student and educate them here, that saves us from paying those tuition dollars that we showed you before. Maintenance vehicles was another piece, and we had maintenance vehicles honestly that dated back to the 80s and 90s. And so, a large part of our expenditures or a significant part of our expenditures is from maintenance vehicles. One truth that we continue to try to emphasize, and you probably heard us talk somewhat about this during the campaign for issue 73, we've spent $5.8 million now since 2015 just to maintain our school. So that's important so folks understand that as these schools age, we are taking care of them. We are investing money in them and that price tag only gets higher. And actually, if you look at the price tag that the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission designed for our six secondary schools were $242 million. So it really is, as you have these aging buildings, it's sort of, you know, bleeds that permanent improvement fund. I also thought it would be good to go to some frequently asked questions because these are things we hear. And then again, at the end, we'll come back to, you know, any questions you have and we'll do the best we can to answer them. One, we heard this during the bond issue campaign and the last levy campaign. Why do we have one of the highest tax rate in Cuyahoga County? The truth is, we don't actually. Parma, Parma Heights, and Seven Hills all ranked below the 50th percentile in effective residential property tax rate. And so, there's 81 tax divisions. Now, you saw before, there's 31 school districts, but there are many split and actually even municipalities. So despite the fact that we're one school district, we have three different tax divisions in our school district. Seven Hills, Parma Heights, and Parma. Seven Hills ranks 42nd out of 81, Parma Heights 45th, and Parma 50th. The high number is actually South Euclid and Cleveland Heights. There's a small sliver of students in South Euclid that actually attend Cleveland Heights schools. So that is actually the highest. The east side tends to be much higher, not, can't explain why that happened over the years. Shaker Heights, Cleveland Heights, really in the top five both. But all three of our municipalities, and again, you can check this with Cuyahoga County, it comes right off of their website. Our three communities are in the lower half of the tax divisions in Cuyahoga County. Folks have asked this before, what happened to all of the Ohio lottery and casino money? Folks, it's a shell game. That visual's up there for a reason. Yes, they talked about dedicating lottery funds to schools. What they didn't tell us or you was that, that just meant they would put less money from other places into school funding. So yes, they dedicate some of Ohio Lottery money to us, but it's not in addition to the school funding that they provide out of their general fund, it's instead of. The other piece is, you know, the casino, which, again, you know, you look back at casino campaigns and this is gonna help and this is gonna help. And I'm not here to argue pro or con on whether casinos were a good thing or whether we should have, you know, believed them when they said they were gonna save our schools. But this is how much money we've gotten from casinos and fiscal, or that we received in fiscal year 2020, $384,500. That's .002% of our budget, not 2%, .002%. So casinos have not been some type of savior. So the truth here, neither the Ohio Lottery nor the casino provide any significant source of revenue for our schools. Don't you make money from busing Brooklyn students? Yes, we do bus Brooklyn students. And quite frankly, that type of regionalization is something that we would like to look at continuing. There is the benefit to our district, although it's a small benefit, that they contribute approximately $10,000 per year toward the purchase of new vehicles. It does not cost us anything. I want to be very clear because folks have asked us this too. "You can't bus my child, but you bus Brooklyn students." That, Brooklyn pays for that service. So they pay the cost of the bus driver, they pay the cost of any time we're dedicating any office time, they pay the cost of the fuel, they pay for that cost. So we bill them for their costs and then they provide to us approximately $10,000 per year toward the purchase of new vehicles. So it is not some type of windfall. It is something that helps us slightly. Over nine years, we'll be able to buy, you know, another bus. So it's not, it's not anything significant where it's moving the needle in terms of the general fund. What impact would the bond issue have on our taxes? So if it passed, what would happen? Here's how you figure out an impact on a bond issue or a levy. Take $100,000. You only are taxed, and this is key, and folks forget this and saw some things on social media even during the campaign that were misleading, you're only taxed on 35% of the value of your home. So you have a $100,000 home, multiply that by .35. The next bond issue we're looking at is actually lower. It's lower because the issue, issue 73 had a higher interest rate. Interest rates have fallen. We certainly want to lock in if we are able to with a passage in May. And right now, that lock-in would be at a lower rate, which allows us to be at 6.31 mils instead of 6.5 that we asked for. So multiply your home value by 35%, which is what you're taxed on, by the millage. Millage is 1/1,000 of a dollar. That gives you $220.85 per year or $18.40 per month. And again, you know, you multiply up or down, for the most part, it's up in our communities. Our home values tend to be more than $100,000, but you can multiply accordingly based upon your home value. But again, please remember to multiply it by that .35. That will give you sticker shock if you don't include that. Again, the truth, the bond issue in May will be lower millage than issue 73 because of interest rates being lower right now than they were last summer. I do want to make sure that I point out, this is if the Board of Education votes yes to put that on the ballot. Certainly, we anticipate a yes vote, but nothing is final until we make a recommendation and the board votes on that. and the Board votes on that, the first reading is Thursday night. Once you need an operating levy soon, again, too, we heard this, we heard this on the radio, Mr. Bender, hi, Mr. Bender, we see you over there. And listen, and hopefully Frank and I have that kind of relationship, Frank was interviewed a good number of times, and I get it, one of the concerns he had was, well, you know, there's a levy coming soon, too. Right now, this is our operating cash, you obviously want to be above this line, this is zero, right? This is our operating cash balance, we're not projecting any type of negativity until 2025. So, this is really remarkable, actually, we have not passed new money since 2011, most school districts are in a four to a six-year levy cycle, we haven't passed in nine years for new money, and yet, we really project out all the way until 2024 being solvent. So, the answer really is not immediately, we won't need a levy, certainly, as you look at a five-year forecast, you can see when that money turns negative, and we obviously can't allow that to happen, we wouldn't be able to pay our bills, but it is not in the next year or two years even. We heard this a lot when I started here, why don't you do a private audit? We do, actually, and I think it's important that we tell that story, too. When we started, we heard that from the community, in fact, we did a town hall similar to this, although it was in person, it was at the Parma Library, and one of the issues they raised is we want a private audit. Every year, school districts are audited, and you really, you can take the state of Ohio audit, which is fine, and it's very satisfactory, there's nothing wrong with that, that's who audited our school district for years, but you can also ask, you can petition the state of Ohio for a private audit. We petitioned for a private audit because we wanted to be able to answer that question, why don't you do a private audit? We wanted to be able to tell you, we do. And so, now, Ray &amp; Associates, which is a CPA firm based in Worcester, audited our records in fiscal year 2020, they're in the middle of a three-year contract, they have two years left on that contract. And I also want to again emphasize that our treasurer, Sean, is a certified public accountant. So, the fact that we have really a private firm, we have an accountant on staff as our treasurer, we are in solid financial status, and I think it's important that people understand that. We continue to hear, you can't manage money, mismanagement, mismanagement. Please think back to our first slide, a lot of red X's there, a lot of those folks just are not here, in fact, all of them that had something to do with those types of different issues. How about COVID? Has COVID had any district impact? It will long-term. In the short term, we've been able to pay for things like hand sanitizer, desks was actually one of our most, our largest expenditures, I think it was approximately $600,000 in desks. We bought those because you really can't socially distance students at tables, so we bought desks so that we could separate those better. Hand sanitizers, as I said, there's Plexiglas throughout our district, you know, in terms of high-use areas, lunch lines, you know, secretarial desks, some teacher desks as well, based on what classroom they might have. The federal government provided CARES funding, and the state has provided the urban school district grant, so it's important to say that for the most part, this has been, you know, kind of a wash in terms of the immediate finances. However, here is where we get into some negativity. Ohio also cut our foundation funding by $2.4 million last year. Now, that's not a one-time cut, folks, that's a $2.4 million cut to the foundation that continues this year, so we're now 4.8 million out, continues the next year, so now, we're now 7.2 million out, and you can just continue, it's a compounding effect, that 2.4 million is a permanent impact unless they do some type of reversal, which they have not discussed. So, the truth is, in terms of COVID, no, in the short term, the immediate, you know, money that we've needed for various, you know, gowns and masks and all those things, that hasn't had a negative effect, that's been a wash. But, long-term, those foundation cuts are going to hurt, and it started with 2.4 million last year, continues with 2.4 million this year, continues with 2.4 million the following year. You may have heard about some different efforts at the state level, and again, there's been different efforts since 1994, when the Deroff issue that we talked about before first came about. But, the most recent effort was House Bill 305, it was also known as the Cup-Patterson Bill. This was a new funding formula, and again, we give the, we give the Ohio House a lot of credit, this was the farthest school funding, really, reformation had gotten since 1994. It passed the House overwhelmingly, I think it was actually 89 to 6, if I remember correctly. The issue was this, right here, it would have, if you would have just used this formula, and what happened in fiscal year 19, so, you know, that's a way to say, okay, if this was in place then, how much money would that have cost? It would have cost the state another billion dollars. That's where the Senate got hung up on this, the Senate was not comfortable saying, we don't know where that money's going to come from. So, thank you, House, for your efforts on this new formula, but the Senate's saying, you know, what do we do with this now? That's a significant amount of money that has to come from somewhere. Another change in that allocation, it does pay charters and Ed Choice schools directly, so instead of us getting money in and then paying money out, the money will go directly to the charters and Ed Choice, if students are attending those different options. The other piece is that, yes, when you look at House Bill 305, the Cup-Patterson Bill, if it were to be approved, yes, there's a, there's a nice chunk of change for Parma, $8.33 million in additional state funding to Parma per year. So, that is helpful, in all honesty, the truth is, the Ohio House, Senate did not even consider this bill in 2020 because it was concerned about the cost. Now, whether they take that up in 2021 is really to be determined, I know in 2000, at the end of 2020, is when it passed, a lot of those legislators, the representatives were not coming back, they were term limited, and so, you know, first, again, that bill died, House Bill 305 is dead, it can be resuscitated and made part of this current general session, but again, we'd have to see if there would be Senate support. We'll come back for your questions in a second, but again, wanted to make sure that folks were aware of the upcoming meetings, and again, we do everything we can to put this out on social media and mailings and, you know, everything that we do, we want to make sure that you can help us to do that as well. All of them are at 6 o'clock, all of them are Zoom. We will share this presentation, not just the PowerPoint, but also a link that you can use to forward to your friends to say, hey, we're trying to get these words out. Now, the January 26 one, I want to be clear, is the same thing, so we're not doing a different finance presentation, you're welcome to come back again, see if I say anything better, maybe my voice will be deeper, okay, that was weird, really weird, sorry. The content, though, will actually be the same, we'll go through our career technical education programs, it's a true gem of what we offer here, we want to make sure folks are aware of that, STEM education, and then on March 9, we look forward to this because these are different programs that we've really begun this year, and despite the fact that we're in COVID, and despite the fact that everything is different, certainly more challenging, we're proud of the work that our staff has done for these innovative programs, and we look forward to really talking more about them on March 9. So, with that, we're going to go back to the screen and see if we have any questions. Um, should be a chat. Okay, if you can just type into the chat, so if you want to ask a question, and, you know, again, I'll be happy to try to answer it as best I can, all I need you to do is type your name into the chat, and then unmute yourself, and we will recognize you. Mickey, it looks like you're trying to talk, but you're muted. John, you have a question regarding the bond issue. John, can you unmute yourself and ask your question, please, sir?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Dr. Smiley. Regarding the bond issue, I have a lot of concerns about the bond offering, but that said, one of my significant concerns is the fact that it's going to be on two ballots. I'm wondering if there's any thought been given to putting it on one ballot and putting the whole cost on one ballot, because I'm wondering if some people may think that the first ballot is the only cost that they're going to incur, and if so, when they see the second ballot in two or three years, they're going to say, well, I didn't know about this, or I'm not paying additional costs, the economy turned south two years after the first issue, you don't get the support. And I think one of the worst things that could happen with respect to this bond issue is that we billed half the schools, and then the other half aren't billed, I think it would just be a terrible outcome.
Yeah, and your point is certainly well-taken, the issue is that it would actually be too much, our school district is large enough, you know, right now, we're at 9,300 students, large enough to the standpoint that the projection of really the all-in, so to speak, is north of $450 million, we're actually only able to borrow 9% of our valuation of the entire district, which comes to $271 million. So, even in this first effort, we're tacking on a small COPS issue, COPS is sort of a lease, and I know I'm in the weeds right now, but we've had to be creative in the financing just to be able to afford the first one. You know, I get it, I hear you, and I worry about the same thing, and I'm just, you know, being honest about, you know, we chose the secondary that was part of our, you know, strategic planning effort, there's good arguments to be made on the other side in terms of elementary, starting with elementary two, but the choice was the secondary in large part because, you know, that's where the consolidation really, there's definitely more passion and need of consolidating secondary schools. So, that was really the motivation for the why, or the sequencing, but the why on the two issues is really, it's specific to not being able, we can't borrow $450 million, quite simply, and so, that's why the split.
Is there, and I didn't know that, thanks for that answer, but is there a way to get the approval from the voters for the money and then delay the borrowing somehow? So, you say to the voters, we're going to, we're going to fund half of it in 2020, but then you're going to vote to approve another half in 2024, so you get the voters to agree to staggered commitment even though you're not borrowing everything upfront?
That's a good question, and we can ask our lawyers, certainly, that's a very good question. The one piece I do want to point out about the second phase, and again, I'm not ever here to say it's going to be cheap, or, you know, this is cheap, this isn't much money, because that's horribly offensive to an awful lot of people who are doing the very best they can to, you know, pay the bills they have in front of them, and, you know, any ask can be a very significant ask based on what your, you know, financial situation is. But the second bond issue right now projects really in the ones, you know, 1.5, 1.7 mils, and I don't want to make that promise now because, you know, before three or four years down the road, when we get the money from the OFCC, that's a second piece of money that we're going to have to ask for, and so, it could change in some way, but right now, we're in that 1.5, 1.7 mil range. The other piece that I want to say, too, John, as I was talking through this with you, is that part of the reason it's sequenced is because that state money is not coming upfront. And so, we will get the state money, when we get the state money, that's when we would go for the second issue, and that state contribution then would be that 69 million they owe us for right now that they're not giving us yet, plus the 34% of the co-funded segments of the second bond issue. So, that's, that is what allows us to drop that millage level down so much, the state would be funding both. Again, you're thinking, and I've always appreciated your thoughtful approach to what we try to do here, I think that the challenge would be, you know, that there is no guarantee then of state money if we don't, you know, do it in that sequence. The folks are going to say, well, you know, if we're going to pay for it all ahead of time, what are you going to do with that state money when it comes? It's going to be that much more expensive to, you know, the voters as opposed to getting that state funding, so, a lot of different complications, but yeah, that's something we can pursue.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, good question. Okay, well, you know, again, first, I appreciate you coming in, and if there's other questions that people want to, you know, I'm very responsive to email, oh, here's one, Joe. Joe, do you want to just speak aloud?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
So, I just have a question regarding like what the money will be spent for as far as the bond issue goes, like are you guys focusing on also funding the teachers and administrators a little bit more as well as constructing new schools or, you know, fixing up the older schools? What exactly are your plans with the, whatever amount the bond issue will be, if that makes sense?
Yeah, no, it's a good question, and the bond issue is specific to new construction, it is not, so there's, there's essentially two different budgets, and I kind of showed you guys that, we have the permanent improvement fund, right, and then we have the operating fund. And so, when you go for a bond issue, it's all permanent improvement, there's no operating money. In fact, in the state of Ohio, the law says you can't even move money from the permanent improvement fund into the bond issue, or from the permanent improvement fund into the operating. You can, ironically, move it the other way, so if you have a really, you know, healthy operating budget, you can move that money toward permanent improvement if you needed to, but the bond issue is specific to new construction, and, you know, at some point, as I showed, you know, the one slide where we projected downward, you know, below that line of zero in 2024, 2025, that's when we would need to look at an operating levy again. Anyone else? All right, we'll wrap up then, thanks for your attention, I hope this was useful, we will record it, everything's available, this is public, you know, help us out by spreading the word, we have, you know, five more of these that we're looking forward to, and, you know, again, hopefully, you know, being able to be at home helps a little bit, too. If you have specific questions, I'm very responsive to email, I'd be happy to do that, you can find me on the website very well. So, thanks again, everybody, we'll wrap up tonight, and I just wanted to thank you again for your time.
Thank you.